Senator Mike Siniklis on Bill 211.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill Number 211 on the third reading file and we afforded an opportunity to just briefly introduce it.
Any objection here? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 211 is an act to adopt the Banking and Insurance Board proposed regulations under the Guam Secure and Fair Enforcement for Mortgage Licensing Act of 2010, otherwise known as the SAFE Act. It's a very extensive document that is intended to regulate the practices of various financial institutions throughout the island that are not currently regulated by the FDIC, the Office of the Comptroller of Currency, or the NCUA, the National Credit Union Association. This bill is to basically codify these rules and regulations, and it's actually, it really is just a formality on my part. The true work and dedication that went into preparing these rules and regulations over the last several years has been done by the Insurance and Banking Commission, and more specifically, the hard work of Speaker Ben Pangolín, who I would much prefer to defer commentary on this, as he has the institutional knowledge on the matter. So at this time, I'd like to defer to Speaker Ben.
Speaker Ben.
Thank you, and since this is my seat, Mr. Speaker, and since this is my seat, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, the adoption of the SAFE Act is a requirement of the national mortgage lending program that's been implemented as a result of the financial crisis that resulted on Wall Street. As you know, what occurred that precipitated the financial meltdown in Lehman Brothers and some of the other financial firms on Wall Street was not the firms themselves in so much in that respect, but the individuals who these firms dealt with that originated loans that were used by the financial firms to package and collateralize and securitize and sell on the open market. And what occurred as the financial crisis emerged and information were gleaned from the investigations that occurred was that a lot of these mortgages, which was the foundation of most of these obligations, were originated by individuals acting outside the scope of regulatory agencies, not using any kind of regulations to guide them in having these companies and these banks grant mortgages to individual buyers of homes. And so what they kind of saw occurred was you would have these mortgage loan originators who are either individuals or companies who package these loans and send them to the banks. And the banks, in their own greed, would take these loans, package them, and then sell them and collateralize them on the stock market as financial instruments that they were able to do. And so what occurred was then, when it was time for these individuals to begin paying back their mortgages, they were defaulting on their mortgages, resulting in a cascading effect on these packaged financial instruments with the banks when they came due to be repaid. And so what Congress did was pass a process and regulations to register the origination of these mortgages, the originators of these mortgages, to put them with some regulatory framework so that there are guidelines and there are criteria and requirements for these individuals to follow, to be licensed to originate these mortgages, and that both individuals, because you have individual mortgage loan originators, they don't have to be corporations or companies, you have sole proprietorships, so you have these individuals, and then you also have company loan originators, mortgage loan originators, who sponsor these individuals and develop a relationship between the two entities. And what the bill does and what the rules and regulation does is it adopts those regulatory requirements for licensing and how these licenses will be issued, the type of information that is available. We go as far as fingerprinting these individuals. We go as far as requiring that they have a bond, should they be issuing and packaging these mortgages, and so forth. Now, this only applies to individuals and companies that are not regulated, as the good chairman rightly stated, by other financial institutions. So bank employees who work as mortgage loan officers in the banks, because the bank has its own regulatory structure under FDIC, does not require and does not fall under these mortgage loan originators, because the banks basically package the loans, verify the information, and either sell or hold those mortgages in their own portfolio. Mortgage loan originators have no financial risk in the mortgages that they package and sell to the banks. The banks have the financial risk. If they package a mortgage, then the money, and they don't repay, then they are on the hook for that money, for that loan. The mortgage loan originator, once they sell it to a bank, there's no recourse if there is fraud or misrepresentation in the application process, in the mortgage process, for the individual. But there may be repercussions with the banks on the mortgage loan originator. But to avoid that kind of problem from existing, which is what they were trying to do, these regulations were put in place. And so on Guam, Mr. Speaker, the regulation would fall under the Insurance and Banking Commissioner. The regulation calls for adoption of the national forms that are all being bound and required to be adopted under the SAFE Lending Act. And so the insurance commissioner is the state regulatory registry license, and it works with Conference of State Banking Supervisors, the American Association of Mortgage Regulators, would be the entity that reviews and receives all of the filings of the information, the credit reports, et cetera, and becomes a clearinghouse for clearances of anybody that wishes to be licensed as a mortgage loan originator, Mr. Speaker. It sets up the requirements for the maintenance of that list, and the requirements for the application fees and so forth, the clearance fees and such. In addition, Mr. Speaker, there are individuals that may take on or issue mortgages on a personal basis for their own real estate portfolio. And if I am an individual real estate investor, and I am issuing mortgages to purchasers of property, as long as there are occasional originators of these loans, I'm not required to be licensed on this, as long as I hold those mortgages myself. So for example, and we limit those transactions to five a year, because once you're doing more than five mortgages a year, you are really in the business of transacting and packaging these loans. But the national regulations, as well as the state, and in this case territorial regulation allows up to five transactions for these personal transactions without having to be licensed. In addition, attorneys who package these loans and do these transactions as part of their service for the legal, for their legal clients or financial institutions are also exempt from the licensing requirements, as long as they meet those criteria. And again, the application process is quite extensive, fingerprints, financial history, net worth reports for the individuals and for the companies, audited financial statements that are required to ensure that they have the financial wherewithal to package these loans and sell them to the financial institutions that would purchase them. And once again, as I mentioned, there's a procedure for sole proprietorship, because you can have individual mortgage loan originators, and then there's company originators. And so there are very detailed requirements for those application processes. Tests are required for these mortgage loan originators. It's a financial field that requires a degree of expertise, a degree of knowledge in the financial instruments and the financial markets. So the licensing requirement requires tests, requires ethics training to ensure that they keep up with what the requirements are of financial ethics and practices within the community. And then it also sets the renewal process as well, Mr. Chair, and, I mean, Mr. Speaker, and then the notices. We want to ensure that these mortgage loan originators are able to be identified and registered. So if a mortgage loan originator, as allowed under current statute, wants to use a name other than his own personal name, a fictitious name, doing business as, once again, all of that process needs to be cleared with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and must be approved prior to using a doing business as or a fictitious name business that doesn't identify him on a personal basis. Any change in the office, in the individual, must be filed with the Banking and Insurance Commissioner, and that information, again, is set out of the adopted forms of the association that must be filled out in order to ensure that the information remains current and that we're able to track these individuals down. There's a provision for insurance of cross-agency cooperation, rev and tax, business license, and other agencies within the government of Guam, the Attorney General, the U.S. Department of Justice, for the investigation of any complaints against these mortgage loan originators. And so there's a requirement for that in the regulation, so that these individuals know that if they should run into any kind of problem, that not only are we limited with regards to our own Banking and Insurance Commissioner and our Attorney General's office, but we also have the other federal regulatory agencies that we have cooperating agreements with. Advertising, once again, as we mentioned, that they're not allowed to hold themselves out in, as being bonded, supervised, regulated, audited, or examined by the island of Guam or any agency thereof. A mortgage loan originator is referred to its licenser under the Guam SAFE Act in any written or printed communication by means of a recorded telephone message, electronic or media, or spoken radio, as a registered mortgage loan originator. Again, this is what was the requirement and the model legislation that have been adopted by all jurisdictions within the United States that are operating financial services in their communities. So we are the last, we would be the last one to adopt this legislation and come under the cooperative agreements that have been established by the National Mortgage Loan Originator Licensing Act. So, Mr. Speaker, there were some concerns, but when we looked at those concerns that were voiced by some of the members, one of the concerns was that there's a surety bond required by the mortgage loan originator person who is licensed or company that is licensed. And one of the concerns of the Banking and Insurance Commissioner, one of the commissioners, was that that only protects the government of Guam, that if there's a violation and so forth, that surety bond kicks in, but it's to the benefit of the government of Guam. Now, in the discussion that we saw and occurred, it was noted that, other than that surety bond requirement, that there's a professional licensure bonding requirement as well, and that most of these companies will then get bonding that will make the consumer whole, versus just the government compensated for any violations of law. So based upon that assurances, we did not make that amendment at this time. We'll continue to watch that and see, once this gets put in place, whether that becomes a problem. And if it does, then we'll come back and look at that issue. But they assured us that all of these individuals, as well as companies, will have professional liability insurance, officers' insurance, omissions' insurance required of the individual companies themselves, over and above the requirement for the surety bond that flows to the benefit of the government. And so, Mr. Speaker, it's time that we've moved forward on this issue. We originally received this a couple of years ago, and, you know, we had a debate here the other day of, you know, should we follow the AAA? The submission of the original rules and regulations did not follow the AAA. It was very clear in the Attorney General's review of it. It was very clear in our review of it when it was submitted to us. It was very clear in the Committee on Rules when they reviewed it. And rather than just saying, "Well, even if it doesn't follow the AAA, we'll just adopt it," people were saying that. Well, we decided, no. We have a process, and the AAA process allows for public comment and so forth. And when we returned it to rev and tax, you know, they were kind of like, "Oh, my God, you know, we're delaying it. We're not moving forward." But what occurred after we submitted it is the discussion became even more focused. And that's when we saw some of the changes that we made during that whole vetting process of taking this out, taking it to the banking community, taking it to the financial services community, taking it out to the individuals, and we were then able to identify concerns that were not vetted, because it didn't follow the AAA. So we basically said, "There's a process here, and there's a purpose for this process. And once you short-circuit that, then you will not find if there are any concerns by our community." And that's exactly what happened here, was we returned it, we required them to follow that process, they held their hearings. As a matter of fact, they held three or four hearings, because of the comments received during the first and second hearing, that this area of the regulation doesn't fit Guam or so forth. And so those changes were made. And that's why it's very important for me that we have, you know, these things that have a historical necessity and an historical understanding of why we do things. And the AAA process is very essential in terms of ensuring community participation, community input in resolving those concerns before this legislature moves forward on legislation that affects our community. And so I want to thank the Insurance and Banking Commissioner and the Office of, and the members of the Insurance and Banking and Insurance Board, who went through that process despite the fact that they felt we should go ahead and move forward, because they were comfortable with it. Once they began soliciting the public comments, they found out that that comfort was misapplied, and that there were real concerns that needed to be addressed. And they did that, and they have now returned it. And we are convinced that this is a much better document that protects the community, that ensures that those that do not need to be covered by this national criteria for mortgage loan originators, that they are excluded. So we don't cover banks, we don't cover credit unions, we don't cover other financial institutions that are regulated, that have their own regulatory scheme within both the local and the federal structure of oversight over financial institutions. So I thank my colleagues, I thank the administration for this, and ask for the support of this body.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Any senator who wish to be heard? If not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, this really was the result of the hard work of the Insurance and Banking Commission, as well as Speaker Ben Pangolín, and it's just come through my committee as a matter of technicality. So I would, of course, like to amend Bill 211 to include Senator Speaker Ben Pangolín as a co-sponsor.
Hearing no objections. On the motion to send it down, there being no objections, so ordered. You want to go back to yours? Okay. Let me just take his, and I'll go.
Finish the calendar.
Bill 99, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Bill 99 slash 32 be placed in the third reading file, and like an opportunity to speak on it, please.
Without hearing any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 99 has to do with minimum terms that have been written into our code for a purpose of punishing criminals. They're not just pieces of paper that have window dressing on top of them. They're instances that are meant to be carried out. Now, the standard definition of minimum, at least to me, means that in whatever contents, you must meet at least those minimum requirements. For example, if you apply at a university admission guidelines, say that you require a minimum GPA of 3.2, then you must at least have a minimum of 3.2, not 3.1, or you get no admission. However, when it comes to our criminal code, the term minimum has not been properly adhered to at all times. We have seen time and time again criminal sentences, or criminal sentence to less than the minimum punishment prescribed by law. This bill is for the victims and the community's safety. It will ensure that convicted persons serve the minimum punishment that the body, this body, I should say, has determined is appropriate, which is one of our most serious responsibilities. Now, the judiciary of Guam has done an excellent job in administering justice. They have also been successful with their therapeutic courts, including drug courts, mental health courts, family violence courts, that provides opportunities, and most recently, a soon-to-be, hopefully, veterans court. In no way does Bill 99 take away any other discretion that may have been effectively exercising for years at the judiciary. I am extremely tough on crime as a senator, and I am proud to say that this body, it reflects on their votes, that they share the same sentiments. This is not an irresponsible bill. This is a public safety concern at the highest imperative. This bill does not establish any new sentencing guidelines. It simply clarifies them. Now, like I said earlier, minimum means minimum. This bill would ensure that the true intent of sentencing guidelines are followed. Now, Mr. Speaker, I do have an amendment that I want to proffer. If you would give me a quick recess, then I can have that passed around, please.
Let's stand and recess for a few minutes. Let's stand and recess for a few minutes.
Senator McCready, I'm going to send you have an amendment.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to proffer an amendment at this time on line seven, page two of the bill. And it should read, "The court shall not suspend in full or in part of any punishment described as a minimum," comma, "in specific, the crimes enumerated in this habitual offender statute as passed by Public Law 32049, which is basically the three-strikes law, and all the other violent offenses that carry a minimum punishment."
Okay, on the amendment, are there... Is anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? There being none, no objections, so ordered. Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the body for allowing that amendment. I have made a commitment to the people of Guam to pass laws that are tough on crime. As we've seen in the past, Madam Speaker, and in the present, that crime is on the rise. And we have just witnessed how close crime is coming to this body. A few weeks ago, an employee of this body was attacked outside. And I think that when you talk about not just the public safety, but when you talk about how close crime is coming to this office and this building, it is a concern of mine. And the concern is that some of these people may not be getting the proper punishments they deserve, because if anything like that happened to one of us, I do believe that we would want them prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, and on top of that, make sure that he serves the sentence that is rightfully so given to him by a judge. So, I look for some conversation today, and any way to make this bill better, I welcome and open to any type of amendments that are proffered by the body. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So, on the main motion, are there any speakers? There being none, and the motion then to send Bill 99 dash 32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Dennis Rodriguez, are we ready for 205? Okay, so, we left off... Oh, the amendment's been copied. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
...back in session. Where we left off yesterday on Bill 205, we left off with Senator St. Nicholas. So Senator, you're recognized for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In consultation with the author and in agreeance, we were looking at trying to tighten up the language here to make sure that we can get as many of our small businesses, our budding entrepreneurs, the export-oriented small businesses and farmers and agricultural producers, to be able to have at least as much of a fair shot as possible in taking advantage of the benefits that this bill is going to provide. And so in order to do that, I would like to proffer an amendment on page five, line twenty. It has been circulated to all the other members.
Page, okay.
The amendment reads, at the end of the word "year," strike the comma and replace and include new language which reads, "which shall be limited to $50,000 per vendor as defined in subsection seventy-seven, six-oh-one G and H of this act, per year, period."
Okay. So everybody, has everyone seen the amendment? Do you want to explain a little bit and then I'll call for them?
Sure. The purpose of this particular amendment, Madam Speaker, is that right now, as the language currently stands, there is an aggregate cap of $500,000 worth of tax credits that can be assigned if the benefits of this bill are taken advantage of by an exporter. And what we don't want to see happen is for a very, very large company to go in there and suck up all these tax credits while a lot of our smaller vendors may have an interest in taking advantage of it as well, but they are no longer able to do so because it has already been fully earmarked and expended for any one or even any two or three limited large producers. And so by adding this amendment in here, we're going to ensure that at least ten vendors will be able to avail themselves of this $500,000 per year credit, at a minimum ten. If a vendor uses less than $50,000, of course, it can be allocated to even more vendors. But we want to at least try to give our smaller businesses, our local farmers, our self-contained and budding operations a chance to also be able to have a shot at what this good bill is intending to achieve, which is to help promote the export of Guam products to overseas markets. And so this amendment is intended to create a more level playing field for our smaller operators. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the amendment, no objection? Oh, Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly because originally I thought that the tax credits were a hundred percent. And the way I understood it, understand it now, is that the shipper makes that donation and that donation is then, I'm just not sure. Maybe the author can, I would like to, or, well, we're speaking on the amendment. So on the amendment, though, when you use the word "per vendor," I'm kind of confused on that because the vendor in this case, because it's a tax credit, is the shipper, if I understand it correctly. It's not the farmer. So depending on how this is structured, this may be not the proper word to use if we're intending that the vendor is the producer of the produce that is being shipped and not the vendor of the tax credit or the vendor of the contribution, which is the shipper who then avails himself of that tax credit. So I'd like to get both the author of the amendment, as well as the author of the bill, to kind of tie this together and see whether we are accomplishing what we want, which is to allow the small producer of Guam-made products to be shipped out to be the one, to have access to the tax credit that is taken, or the donation that is taken by the shipper. So I'm just not, I'm not sure that this accomplishes it because of that.
Okay, so Senators, either the primary author of the bill or the sponsor, either one of you who would like to answer and maybe what your intention is. Okay, thank you, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you to our good colleague. You know, when we were discussing this yesterday, you know, I felt that we had enough safeguards in the legislation that would, that would really take care of the concerns that my good colleague from Talafofo, Daredo, had in terms of ensuring that not just one contributor would suck up all the tax credits. And so, you know, even here, if you look at subsection, page eight, subsection seventy-seven, six-oh-seven, you know, there's a process we put in place that the authority, together with RevTax, must develop, really, a protocol where, and I'll read here, page twelve, it says, or I'll read the whole thing. "The authority in consultation with Department of Revenue and Taxation shall develop an equitable and timely process pursuant to which availability and equitable distribution of the tax credits are provided for and ensures maximum participatory access for all Guam product sale exporters seeking contributions." And so, you know, there's that safeguard, but now we're here with this amendment and, you know, it does, I agree, make some, it kind of, makes it kind of confusing, but I believe what the mover of the amendment is trying to do is say here is that the shipper who takes a contribution, who gives a contribution of, let's say, shipping costs five hundred, and says for, you know, for that shipping, he's going to contribute two hundred fifty, which he would take off as a tax credit, right? And so what the amendment is saying is that he must limit it to, you know, vendor A will only be limited to, he can only give up to $50,000 of contributions for vendor A. And then for vendor B, C, and so on, it's limited to that $50,000. And so am I, am I correct on that? Yes. So that's the way it is. And the way we're doing it where we're saying it's the shipper who would contribute because really the Guam product shareholders, our people, the small business owners, really, you know, these are small business owners who can't really afford to front the cost of shipping. And so the way it's worked here is that the shipper would take, you know, would be able to make that contribution so that, you know, the shipper, the exporter, or the farmer, or the Guam product shareholder can still have the ability to export their products. So I hope I answered some of the concerns that were raised.
Senators Nicholas, maybe you want to also respond to Speaker Panglinen's question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. Thank you. I very much see where Speaker Ben's coming from. I always appreciate his sharp eye because we do want to make sure the intent is achieving what it is trying to achieve. And so on the amendment, I'd like to, I guess I would withdraw the amendment. I want to add one word in.
Oh, no, so just amend your amendment.
Okay, I'd like to amend my amendment to add a single word in, in between the words "per" and "vendor" on the second line of the amendment that's been circulated.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to include the word "exporting," "per exporting vendor."
Exporting, okay. So in between "per" and "vendor," add the word "exporting."
Correct. So we'll read, the new language we read, "which shall be limited to $50,000 per exporting vendor as defined in subsection seventy-seven, six-oh-one G and H of this act, per year." That way, we're, I very much agree with Speaker Ben, we're being very clear that this is, we're limiting it to the exporter, we're not limiting it to the shipper. So I thank him very much for his sharp eye, and I would like that to be the actual amendment that I proffer, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. So Speaker Panglinen, any other comments? There being none, no objections? So ordered. Thank you, Senators. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the main motion? Senator Rodriguez, would you like to close?
Thank you again, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues, really, for their support and for their participation in moving this forward. Really, this, the intent of this legislation, Madam Speaker, is to jumpstart the export industry. And we're giving the tools necessary for GIDA and RevTax to put together so that we can ensure that our small business owners, especially our Guam product shareholders and our farmers, are able to take advantage of these and hopefully, you know, because we know our produce here and our products that are made here are top quality. And so we're looking forward to seeing this industry grow. And if, as one of our good colleagues here said, things are, some products are gangbusters, then we can come back here and revisit the caps that we've put into play. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to also add Senator Mike St. Nicholas and Speaker Ben Panglinen, if that's okay, to be co-sponsors of this legislation.
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. On the amendment then to send, two zero five dash thirty-two, the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Going back again to the agenda and where some discussions have been suspended or other bills in which Senators are ready to present, we're going to go back to Bill number one twelve dash thirty-two, and I recognize the author, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move that Bill one one two dash three-two COR as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, Maritime Transportation, be moved to the third reading file, and I would like to discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the intent of Bill one one two is to provide a more affordable systems development charge by making the charge proportional to the cost of the home being built. And also, it postpones the payment of the systems development charge from the building permit stage and pushes it back to the occupancy permit stage. Now, the systems development charge is a program that was enacted into law back as early as nineteen eighty-eight. It was subsequently amended by public law twenty-six dash one sixty-four, and we are now amending it again today to really try and address the issue of making the construction of an affordable home as affordable as possible. Now, many have argued that, you know, the systems development charge in and of itself is the make it or break it component of whether an individual will be able to get a construction loan to build an affordable home. But notwithstanding what Bill one one two does is that it has set as a threshold that homes that are constructed, the cost of the home and the land, if it costs $180,000 or less, those homes are deemed to be in the affordable housing category. And it is those group of homes that would then be assessed the systems development charge based on, on a proportionate basis, depending on the cost of the home. So for example, as it stands right now, an individual who builds a half-million-dollar home pays the same systems development charge that an individual who could only afford, let's say, a $70,000 home and a piece of land that was, that was given to them, given to the individual by his parents, pays the same level of systems development charges. So what Bill one one two would do then is that for these homes that are $180,000 or less, the systems development charge would be based on a percentage of the total cost of that home and the land, if the land was bought. But for purposes of this discussion, let's assume for the moment that the individual owns the land already, and all he needs to do is he wants to construct a home on it. So the house that he's building is going to cost $100,000. And that home would be classified as an affordable home. Now, if he lives in an area which does not have wastewater services, sewer line services to it, he would only be charged 1.2% of the cost of that construction. So the home that's being built at $100,000 will only be assessed a systems development fee of 1.2%. That would be $1,200. And if he was in an area that would, that has sewer services on it, that services the area, he would then pay 1.8% of that, another $1,800. So the total of that then is that for that $100,000 home, the systems development charge would be a total of no more than $3,000. Under today's scheme that Guam Water Works uses, that individual would have paid $5,600 for the systems development charges. So this, then, Bill one one two sets up this new arrangement, which will then make the systems development charge more affordable. Now, there have, of course, been arguments that basically says, let's do away with the systems development charge. And, you know, the argument to that is that everybody that ties in to the utilities, infrastructure, should make some kind of a contribution for the capacity that they're going to take up as a result of the new demand that they were going to put on the system. Now, the systems development charge certainly is not sufficient to build a new well, but the contribution certainly will make some contribution down the road to the additional upgrades to the systems, to the expansion to the system as the population grows and we need to put in greater infrastructure. The other part of Bill one one two, what it does, and in particular, this is most helpful for your developers, such as those who build, like the Ironwood Estates, who build affordable housing subdivisions. The current law requires that they pay the systems development charge upfront. So that's capital that is, you know, that they have to lay out, and it does not go towards constructing the homes in that subdivision. What Bill one one two does now is it shifts that cost burden towards the end, such that it's paid at the point when the buyer goes to apply for an occupancy permit. At that point, then, the systems development charge will have to be paid. And so that, Madam Speaker, is the gist of Bill one one two. I would ask the, my colleagues to favorably consider it. The $180,000 threshold is based on the median income as defined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which establishes the current median income for Guam at about $39,000. Now, of course, that figure is going to change over the years. Bill one one two has a provision that requires the Guam Water Works Authority to review, then, this threshold every five years and make the necessary adjustments. So with that, Madam Chair, I would ask my colleagues to favorably consider Bill one one two. Thank you.
On the main motion, I recognize Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise, Madam Speaker, in full support of Bill one one two. I think several years ago, when the systems development charge was first announced, and CCU Chairman and others discussing the reason for it, certainly, the cost and infrastructure cost is not going down, and certainly in terms of the availability and the usage of property, in terms of acreage and, and what requirements are in place with regard to and what requirements are in place with regard to, you know, septic tank capability or sewer requirements, and then, of course, the northern aquifer and subdivisions and the like, all of these complex issues, and as I sat on the Guam Land Use Commission and reviewed applications, you know, for large developers, typically, it's not a difficult situation, they can factor it in, but when it comes down to the common guy, it certainly has had a tremendous, tremendous impact. So, Madam Speaker, now, Mr. Speaker, I really think, I like that transition, I really think that this is a very fair approach, a very reasonable approach, and an approach that basically recognizes that while certainly there is a tolerance within the system of when infrastructure has been paid for, those who, over the years, have paid the bills, shouldered the responsibility of financing, and everything else that goes along with providing for highest and best use of our property based on our ability to provide power, more importantly though, water and wastewater management, this is just simply life-giving and life-sustaining. At that level, it certainly needs to be recognized that there's a certain degree of tolerance if we're going to continue to help our people realize their dreams, realize affordable housing, realize that the end of a mortgage, that it's not almost a game changer when it comes down to the shock of having to tie into the system. So, Mr. Speaker, in closing, I hope the rest of our colleagues can see the wisdom in this approach. I know that in speaking to CCU members, this certainly is a reasonable approach in terms of mitigating what the overall system issues are. And so, I think that the good author has arrived at something that's very workable. So, thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 112. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do see the tremendous benefits that the direction of this bill is going to take our island, but I'm, and I'm also very glad that it's being entertained in this session in the context of some recent action that we've taken, and I'd like to talk about both as they relate to the bill. We just recently concluded the, and voted on, the authorization for the Guam Water Works Authority to go out and borrow $450 million to make all of these improvements throughout the island. And all of these improvements that they're looking at making are also capacity improvements. They talked about how they're going to be increasing the ability to handle added capacity issues throughout the island. So as the island grows, this $450 million that we've already authorized, they're going to go out and borrow, has made the capital investments necessary for us to be able to manage that growth. And our people are going to have to pay for that added capacity and all of those system upgrades through higher water rates. So if we're already paying for that capacity, and the capacity will therefore exist because we've made the investment, what's the system development charge for in terms of offsetting the impact of the new home affecting capacity? If we've already made the investment through borrowing and higher rates, and the capacity has increased, why are we now going to be tagging on another charge, a system development charge, to offset the impact of that capacity? It's already been paid for. And if that system development charge is supposed to provide a level playing field in terms of us who've paid for that increased capacity, then how does that translate directly to offset the cost to the ratepayers who've made the initial investment with higher rates and the floating of the bond? And so, when I look at this bill, when I think of it in the context of the bond borrowing that we did and the higher rates that we're going to have to pay as a result, where's the system development charge money going? Because we're capitalizing interest on our bonds, we're borrowing to pay for our borrowing, so it's not going into some bank to save money for systems upgrades. So, overall, affordable housing or housing in general, where is the system development charge going if we are already paying for it through the floating of the bonds and the higher rates that we're having as a result? So I guess I would like to pose that question to the author. If the system development charge is necessary to offset the impact on the system that the new homeowner is going to have as a result of buying or building a home and tapping into the system that we've invested and upgraded, then how is that money going to offset all of the rate increases that we are now paying as a result of the bond that has already made the investment into that capacity?
Senator, you yield.
I will.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Well, certainly, the question that the senator poses is a very valid question. And the fact of the matter is that this is where we, as policymakers, really need to bring to a balance the social aspects of these policies in contrast to the technical aspects of it. Now, first of all, the systems development charge, the revenue that is generated from that charge is not really significant in comparison to the revenues that are generated from the rates that are charged to our customers. And so, to the fact that we're basically reducing the revenues from the systems development charge, I don't believe is significant enough to affect the ability to service the debt of, for example, the bond that the utility is going to go out and take on. When we had this public hearing, of course, the committee did not do it in a vacuum. Guam Water Works came in, the Consolidated Commission on Utilities came in, Public Utilities Commission came in and testified, and they certainly did not see that this change in the systems development fee that would have the social impact that it is designed to have by Bill 1112 would be detrimental to the ability of the agency to be able to service its debts. So while I can understand the concern that is being raised by the gentleman from Dedido, I don't believe that that concern really is as significant as one might think that it would be.
Is that sufficient? Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, I appreciate the response from the author of the legislation, and again, I do like the bill. It's going to reduce the cost of the system development charge to respect to affordable housing. I'm just trying to make sense in my mind, though. If we are already paying for the increased capacity as ratepayers, and if the systems development charge is supposed to be a charge to offset the cost of tapping into that capacity, I just can't shake the feeling that we're kind of double-charging here for the same capacity. We're charging our consumers higher rates to increase, to, of course, upgrade the existing infrastructure in the existing capacity, but building into that, we're adding more capacity, and we're paying for it. And so, if the system development charge is also being charged to offset the capacity impact, but it's already been paid for on the front end by the consumer, then how is that systems development charge translating into a direct benefit to the consumer who's already paying for these capacity improvements through higher rates? I'm trying to clearly understand that, because if we have already paid for the increased capacity, one of the topics that was brought up while we were talking about the bond is that the benefit of doing capitalized interest and not paying upfront and then spreading it out over a longer period of time is that, over that longer period of time, we're going to have all these new ratepayers coming up, new people tapping into the system, and then being able to spread out the rate increases, any potential future rate increases as a result, because we're going to have more consumers. But if the systems development charge is an impediment in any way to those very same new consumers coming into the system, then I'm concerned that the systems development charge might be working against that whole logic of put off paying for it now, spread it over a longer period of years on the bond, because we're going to have all these new payers coming in, but then now we're discouraging those new payers from potentially coming in because we're also tagging them with an additional systems development charge that we, as ratepayers, are already paying for. If we're already paying for it, and if that capacity is supposed to bring in new ratepayers that we can spread out the cost of the overall system, then why are we charging and creating that additional obstacle to new ratepayers with a systems development charge? If the capacity has already been paid for, why are we charging it twice? You know, and that's an argument that's been made in months previous, but it's crystallized for me at this point, because I've looked at it within the context of the borrowing, the rate increase that's paying for the borrowing, the borrowing that's supposed to go to improving our existing infrastructure and expanding our capacity. So if all of that's already been paid for, why are we paying, why are we having the people pay for it twice? Why are they going to have to pay for a systems development charge and then get onto the very system that has the higher rates that already includes that very capacity that they're being charged for? I don't know. You know, I step back and I'm still trying to navigate it. Because even if the argument is, oh, they're coming into the system and they weren't tapping into it before, but they're coming into it as new ratepayers, and as new ratepayers, they're paying for it in that rate that was already set on that bond that created that capacity anyway. So it just feels like charging twice. And, you know, and again, you know, in the context of the greater picture of the overall session that we've had here, we've talked about the bottle bill, and we've talked about how that needs to balance out properly so that we're not charging twice on bottle deposits and then paying for the same recycling of those very products through our trash collection fees. You know, the concern there, that the good author of the bottle bill is working, is trying to work through, is we don't want to charge our consumers twice for the same thing. So when I look at the overall systems development charge question, I must now ask the same thing. If it's already been paid for, and if it's already priced into the rates, and if we're trying to bring new ratepayers onto the system to help spread that cost out, why are we going to be charging them twice? So that's something that I'm going to have to wrestle with. I like the bill. I like the idea of lowering the systems development charge for affordable housing. But now the question really, really resonates in my mind, and I'm going to have to work with the CCU and the PUC and the Chairman of the Committee to fully get a handle on exactly how it makes sense for us to be paying for that capacity as ratepayers, and then charging again for that very same capacity to the, to new customers who are going to be the very same ratepayers paying for that capacity that's already been funded. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? Senator Pangolin? Any other senator after Senator Pangolin? Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I just have a few questions, maybe, and some comments that I'd like to make and also ask the author of the legislation to answer. And overall, I realize that what it's saying, that it's primarily for new construction, you know, and who are going to build on their primary residences, and that it's not applicable, this is for residences, and it's not applicable to commercial development or multiple residential units. I can understand that. My question is, is that why only for newly constructed homes as a primary residence versus allowing families right now who are currently living in their homes and they have water connections, but they are not connected to the sewer system and are under, of course, septic tanks? But we have a very big situation, especially up north, where that's where our water table is at. And I'm wondering, you know, why not considering maybe existing homes, you know, especially, I'll give the example of the Gilbasa development now, because these are families who've purchased lands and have, I know have constructed just like wooden frame homes or tin roofing homes, and I really don't have this access and may want to. Could they? Or even other families in some of the villages, especially in the south, who are not a part of the sewer system unless you're living right along the main highway, but there are homes on secondary roads, maybe, that's not too far? Could, would the author please respond to this and maybe the consideration of opening this up to existing residential homes to participate in this payment, this system development charge?
Senator Ada, do you yield?
Yes, I will, Mr. Speaker. The applicability of the systems development charge is not necessarily because it's a new construction, more so than a new connection to the system. So it can be an existing house that now, you know, the income has increased, and now they can afford to actually connect to the sewer system. So certainly, now, quite frankly, this scenario that the speaker has raised, I don't, you know, do we go in and appraise that home and appraise it to see whether it comes within the affordable housing range so that it is only required to pay 1.8% of the appraised value of that home? Or, I don't, I really don't know. I don't think that scenario was contemplated. So I can't, I can't really answer that question. However, I think, you know, that's something that can be looked at and certainly worked with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate that response, and the fact that, yes, maybe we've not ventured down to that example that I've given, and I'm glad that that is something maybe that the Chairman, you know, would be, would consider actually having a discussion on it, because I think it's very important, especially for homes in the north because of the water table, we want to protect that. Now, I'm happy to hear this says that new connection for existing homes, however, in the language on page three, it says for residents who are constructing or purchasing a single-family dwelling. So this, to me, then, does not mean existing, it means they're going to build one or they're going to buy a home. But what about the ones that's already bought? The families are living in the homes, so they don't qualify in terms of constructing a new home or purchasing another home when they already have a home. So is there any way in which maybe language could be put in to make sure that that means existing homes right now can actually be qualified for this new connection?
Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, when we introduce legislation, normally, it's prospective. And to say, then, to allow whatever changes we're making here to existing homes, or that may be kind of difficult, or I would be concerned about that because we don't know just how large of a Pandora's Box we're opening. We do know that, for example, looking forward, there is a projection as to how many affordable homes, for example, are going to possibly be built, at least from the Governor's Program. He's looking at constructing 3,000 affordable homes. You know, that represents about $13 million in systems development charges. There's a projection as to how many homes that are more than the affordable home category that can be projected, but, you know, how many of the existing 27,000 GWA customers this would apply to is really difficult. difficult to say.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I understand that and that's exactly what, how I read the bill, that it's moving forward, of course. But the fact remains is that we still have homes, especially for sewage is our concern of wanting to protect our water table. And I just think that, you know, I mean, I don't know how we're going to resolve that. Maybe in the next bill is something that could be considered. But we really need to address that because homes are just popping up in the north. We all know that. Everyone's moving central north and, you know, it's ultimately the unintended consequences of that without going into being a part of the sewage system, I think ultimately in the long run would affect the entire island. The language in page three, line eight, and I'm kind of concerned about this because at least from what I'm hearing is that by removing low or moderate income, basically opens it up now for everyone. So we're not just talking about affordable homes. So that means, they said, am I reading this correctly, that across the board for affordable homes and executive homes, that the percentage of 1.2 for water connections and 1.8% for sewer connections of the, we didn't say that, but it just says, I heard the chairman say, the appraised value of the home.
Senator Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This, what the speaker is referring to is the amortize systems development charge. And this is actually a feature of the program which allows you to almost go like on a payment plan. So the way, the way the bill is structured is that it would allow you to put down 10% of the systems development fee that has, that is going to be assessed. And then it will give you up to 15 years to pay off that remaining 90% at an established interest rate, of course. Reality of it is that right now, it is only made available to low to moderate income customers. But, and yes, it's true, by removing that qualifier there, it really makes it available to all residents who are applying to connect into the system. So yes, it does, but the reality of it is that you really probably could count on one hand the number of people that would utilize the amortize systems development plan because a lot of them basically would roll in as part of their construction loan, the cost of the systems development fee.
So, and the last question that I have is that would then, though, by removing that and then we talk about this development, the affordable housing development plan, is that only now, again, it doesn't say, but I mean, I know you gave an example here of homes that are $180,000 or less, but would that percentage also be applicable to basically any home, any amount, no matter what? If it's a $500,000 home, would that owner pay 1.2% for water connection and 1.8% for sewer connection?
The percentages, if you really take a look at it all, you know, it goes back that the total systems development charge that is placed on any new connection is up to a maximum of $5,600, especially if the house is, has been constructed in an area that is serviced by a sewer line and, of course, water services. If the home is being built, and so when you take, I think if the, I just, I just need a few minutes to find the information as to how that 1.2% breaks down. But in essence, in essence, if the home of, is let's say a $500,000 home and he's going to connect into the sewer system and the water system, he would have, that individual would have to pay $5,600. And the way that that would break down is $3,500 for the sewer connection and $2,100 for the, for the water connection. I'm trying to gather my thoughts here to see how, so that I don't confuse everyone. But if you take, I'm going to need to, I'm going to need a little bit of time to...
We'll just take a short recess.
Right.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, do you have any further questions?
No, Mr. Speaker, and I thank you for the short recess, to be able to speak to the author of the legislation and was able then to answer my question. I'm happy for the fact, of course, that now it's open to all residents for the amortization of having to pay for, you know, this connection. And then the, you know, of course, it was changed later on to that the years have been extended and it is part of their billing, which is good. You know, and I look forward to the chairman actually then considering a possible legislation to get the dialogue going as well when we address other homes that are currently up at where our water wells are at, to make sure that these families who own these properties do go online, especially for sewage because that's so critical, knowing that all of our water basically comes from the northern waterlands. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I have Senator Panglinen and Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, Madam Speaker, I support this legislation, of course. I think it's one of the things that we have been struggling to find, a way to help our homeowners who are seeking to provide a way for them to deal with the system development charge. While some of us may think that, you know, $5,000 is nothing when you add it on to a mortgage, for many, it could really be a disqualifier for qualifying for a mortgage, that that amount that you have to kind of come up with on a cash basis or put it into your mortgage for financing may just bump that monthly payment above what you, what the underwriting criteria is that the banks use. I mean, that's what we have seen occur with this systems development charge. And so it really is a challenge for many of our residents seeking to place themselves in their, in homes and get out of the rental market and start making investments into family homes. The one concern that I have, I guess, is something that, you know, to me looks to be kind of open-ended. And that is on page 15, I mean, page three, line 15, where we say that the amortization will be not exceed 15 years, 10% of the total, the remainder of the charge shall be amortized over a period not to exceed 15 years, in which the charge plus interest. And I think what we need to do is kind of define parameters for what that interest rate should be. And, you know, I'm not, I'm really not sure how to do that or what to do that, but one thought would be, maybe just peg it at the latest borrowing by the Guam Water Works Authority. So if the Guam Water Works Authority is borrowing money at, you know, 5.5%, then it should also lend that money back out at 5.5%. So I'm just not sure of what, how to peg that interest rate and provide some parameters and not let it be, you know, that GWA may decide to charge 10% or 20% for that balance of the amortization or amortize amount. So again, I'm just trying to grapple for what that would be, would be the lowest consumer rate on Guam or something. And maybe if I can just, just ask for, just a very short recess and maybe just confer with the author for any thoughts that he may have on this issue.
We're going to take a brief recess. Speaker Panglinen, an amendment?
And I would then like to make an amendment on line 15, after the word interest, plus interest at the rate of GWA's last bond issue. So if GWA goes out on a bond issue and it pegs that amount, because what it can actually do is reserve a portion of the bond issue, either the interest earned on it, you know, and reserve that to amortize this. And we then pass on whatever savings GWA can give to its consumers because of its improved financial condition to that with reduced interest rates. So that would be my amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections. So there. Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. I have Senator Munia Barnes.
Ms. Msie, Madam Speaker, I just want to say for the record that being a part of the Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, in our efforts to try and realize the quality of life for our community residents out there, this talk of the system development charge was very much at the forefront and working closely with utilities over... And working closely with utilities oversight, there was a bill that was introduced earlier. And I know that what was reported out on this bill, as substituted 112-32, I know that there were considerations based on what we could do to help those within the indigent community. You and I know that in the past, this August body has been very forthcoming in making sure that we have our working-class families try and, and first-time homeowners really try and realize true home ownerships for themselves. And a lot of times, they were met when they may qualify for a house, but being able to put the infrastructure in to hook up to the government line was probably out of their reach. You and I know cases where, just to get the infrastructure of water and wastewater, there is existing law that the good senator from Baragada, former Speaker Panglinen, had introduced saying that the government cannot deny hookup of water and utilities within 100 feet of a government easement. But you and I know that there are a lot of our residents who really don't live near where access to utilities is already there. So, we wanted to make sure that we gave an opportunity for our people to at least be giving or to leverage opportunities or creativity as it relates to offsetting costs to make sure that our consumers, I mean, our residents here who want to build a house for themselves and their families, that they really have that opportunity and not go through the obstacles of trying to get that necessary hookup. So, of course, system development charge, when it was implemented, really had a lot of heartache for those really wanting to build, because sometimes they qualify for the basic building of, whether it be for a family of four, a two- to three-bedroom with two baths, can be overwhelming in as far as pricing. But then to add on, to be able to hook on to the utilities could be even more trying. And when I was looking at this bill, and I really want to applaud the author for coming up with, at least the provision of a standard of someone building a home, what breaks could be given. So, on page five, when we look at line seven and that paragraph to 18, they talk about the charges being set, but it would be to, to the intent to giving this accommodation to those who qualify was that the housing, the house that was being built would not be over $180,000. And I hope I'm saying that right. Is that right? And I just had the opportunity to talk to USDA earlier, and I asked them, what was their HUD publishing income limits for very low-to-low income families, which is 80% of the area median income and what HUD publishes a year? And they said the maximum of that, this year's published price, at 80% of the AMI, which the area median income, is at $244,000. And as I look at the pricing here, this is $180,000. And Madam Speaker, I have the definitions here from HUD, which is the program called the Section 502 loans, which are primarily used to help low-income individuals or households purchase homes in rural areas. And then these funds could be used to build, relocate, or renovate a home, or to purchase and prepare sites, including providing the water and sewage facilities. And based on the eligibility, on the published rate today, that limit for the publisher, for the, for this year's published rate at 80% of the AMI is at $244,000. So, if I could be as bold to say, I'd like to increase and amend that $180,000 to $244,000. Mind you, this is the qualification from HUD for the very low-to-low income families. So, that would be my amendment.
On the amendment, which I guess wherever it applies in the bill, then, to increase it from $180,000 to $244,000. And Senator, are you also including the definition of the USDA's AMI definition?
That can be, I have it right here, and that can also be included, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so maybe let's deal first with just the first thing, the number, the amount from $180,000 to $244,000. Senator Tom Etta, you recognize on the Munia Barnes amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, you know, when we were trying to establish what that threshold is, we first, of course, have to define what is, what is an affordable home. And basically, the sources I went to basically said that, in the United States, a commonly accepted guideline for housing affordability is a housing, is a house, housing cost that does not exceed 30% of a household's gross income. So, starting with that premise, then, we took a look at what then is the median income for Guam. And that's where, then, you know, things kind of start going awry, because if you take a look at the HUD reference point, Housing and Urban Development, I guess, the HUD median income defined for Guam for the year 2013 is $52,800. If you go to, if you go to, then we have, of course, the Guam Bureau of Labor Statistics, which establishes a median household income. And unfortunately, their latest statistic is for the year 2010. Their statistic is that the median household income for Guam, at least as of 2010, was $39,052. And so, you know, I was wondering, okay, so which do we pick? So, I went and I asked, you know, well, I actually asked Mr. Joe Bradley, he's a respected economist here on our island, asking to clarify, you know, the difference between the data that's published by the Guam Department of Labor and HUD. And basically, his response was that the, the data that is published by the Guam Bureau of Labor Statistics, the median income pertains to Guam's productive, blue-collar workers. And it excludes the, you know, the white-collar workers who are working at some offices and all that. We're talking about the guys who are out there trying to eke a living in the hot sun. And these are the guys that we're trying to help. So, if we were to use, then, the median income that's published by the Department of Labor, and that's, that's the choice that I made in trying to arrive at a threshold, is to use the Department of Labor Statistics of $39,000 as the median income, and basically said, okay, given that level of income, they would be able to afford a mortgage that has a debt service of no more than $980 a month. And given, given that ability to pay, the most that they would be able to qualify for would be $180,000. So, that's how we went to, that's how we achieved, or we arrived at this threshold of $180,000. I find it difficult to really, you know, agree that a person who, using the HUD's median income statistic, which for 2013 is $50,800, that individual, and if he was going to set aside 30% of that for a payment on a house mortgage, would basically be eligible for, and again, you know, a lot of this depends on, a lot of this depends on, on what calculator you use, which uses different underlying assumptions. But using that as a median income, the individual would be able to qualify for a $210,000 loan. So, so that's, that's where the difference has come. That's how we arrived at $180,000. So, you know, is an individual who's going to be earning $39,000 a year going to go out and build, go out and build a $250,000 home? I just kind of, I don't know, I don't think that's, and we're trying to help the guys who really needs the assistance without breaking the back of the utility to be able to continue to have the revenues to, to continue paying for, you know, the future growth of the utility. So, at least the contributions that the systems development charge is making. So, I have, I would object to increasing that threshold from $180,000 to, what is it, 230? 244? Great. You know, $50,000 more, and you can actually buy houses over at Paradise Estates. So, I object to the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Does anybody else would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Snickles, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, whenever numbers start popping up, I immediately just start jumping onto my, all of the different online calculators I have here on my computer, and I just start scribbling them down and doing my own breakdowns. And Senator Etta hit the nail on the head in terms of what the current bill is looking to be able to facilitate. And the amendment that's being proffered by, by the good senator for $244,000 does have an entirely different outlook altogether. That would require a, a monthly household income for debt service for the house at $1,320 a month. Now, I see both perspectives. And what, what comes back down to my mind is typically what happens when we go out and we try and buy a home? Very, very, very rarely does an individual go out and buy a home, you know? It's usually a couple. It's usually two people who go onto a mortgage application. Sometimes it's one, don't get me wrong. But when two people go out and apply, they're, both of their incomes become factored into whether or not they're going to qualify and for what amount. And Senator Etta is absolutely right. The threshold that's typically looked at for banks when it comes to borrowing for a house is, is that the monthly expenses of the house do not exceed 30% of your, of your income. But there is another side to the coin. What they do is they look at your overall debt service capacity. So, let's say you have a car loan. Let's say you have a student loan, and then you want to go out and take out this mortgage. They actually factor in the car loan and the student loan payments you have to make into your total monthly available gross income to decide if you are going to be able to fit within that 30%. So, for somebody who's making $39,000, who has zero debt, no car payment, no student loan payments, no personal loan payments, no credit card payments, zero debt, then they will be able to qualify for a mortgage that will grant them $180,000 worth of borrowing capacity to buy a home. The reality is that almost everybody who is the, who makes up this working class that we all fight for, that we're all a part of, we all have those kind of payments. It's very, very unlikely for somebody who's making $39,000 a year and holds a job to not have a car payment. And so, what happens is that the cost of that car payment will get factored into the total borrowing capacity of that individual, and whether or not they're going to be able to qualify for a loan. And so, there's all these factors that start coming into play when it comes to going out and getting a mortgage. It's one of the biggest decisions you'll ever make in your life, and more often than not, it's a decision that you don't make on your own. So, for me, when I listen to both speakers, I try and see, you know, where the, where the middle ground is, because we want to be able to have people afford homes. But the realities are that it's not strictly as cut and dry as saying, what's 30% of your income, and that's how much we should be allotting? Because we also need to factor into the equation two earning, two earning households, households where we have two people working who want to go out and get a loan. And then we also need to step back and look at it, not just from the perspective of what people are able to borrow for, but what they're actually able to buy for their money. And what does $180,000 buy here on Guam, you know, in terms of affordable housing? Does it truly get a home that will meet the needs of a family, or is it just something that's barely going to make the grade? And if you jump onto some of the real estate websites that we have here on Guam, and you do a search, and you threshold out everything that's over $180,000, you come, your, your, your choices are very, very narrowed. And, and then there's other challenges to it, because it's not just what can you buy for 180 grand, but why is it priced at that amount? And sometimes, you know, you can find a house for less than $180,000, but it's because there's issues with it. Like, for example, it doesn't meet the setback zoning requirements, and so you won't be able to go out and get a bank loan for it. And that's why the, the price of the home is artificially lower, because the ability for you, for them to find buyers is hard, because they have all of these other challenges attached to the selling of the home. So, I can see where both speakers are coming from. If I could request a brief recess, Madam Speaker, perhaps we can find a middle ground that would, that would get us to a greater idea of what affordability might be, and how we can match that, not only to the capacity of our people to go out and actually borrow the amount they need, but also match it to the actual structures and the kind of homes that we want our people to be, to be going into. Because the last thing I want to do is have somebody go out and see a house, husband and wife family of, you know, two kids, and they see a house that's $210,000, and it's, it's going to meet their needs, it's going to be a real good investment for them, it's going to be some place for them to live for the next 30 years or more of their lives. But then they say, wait, we can't go there because the SDC is too high, let's look for something that's 180. And then all of a sudden, we're talking about reducing the, the quality of life for our people when they probably could have, in fact, afforded the 210, but it just wasn't, it just wasn't feasible because of the systems development charge. And again, this brings me back to the whole question of the systems development charge to begin with. Because if we are already paying for that capacity, why are we having to charge again for the same capacity? So, I would like to request a brief recess, Madam Speaker, so that we can probably see if there's a middle ground here that we can find.
Okay. We're going to take a brief recess. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess. There will be further discussion on the amendment, the Munia Barnes amendment to Bill 112, and we'll take that up when we come in this afternoon after recess. But I'd like to recognize the majority leader for motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend discussion that we're discussing in the second reading file, and that we revert back to motions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we place on the legislative consent calendar the appointment of Jeffrey Johnson to serve as a member of the Public Utilities Commission for a term of six years, as defined by section... Yeah, so, for this nominee, as reported out by Senator Tom Adda's Committee on Transportation, and I move that he be placed in the legislative, in the, in the, let's say, concurrence.
Consent.
File, and then when we get to there, I'll move it to the voting file.
Okay. So, on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we place on the agenda Bill 161-32, and it's a version that was reported out by Senator Frank Uggins' committee, as substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and the Judiciary. And it's relative to the establishment of the Justice for Veterans Act of 2013. This is regarding the Veterans Court.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take Bill 150. It's a rezoning measure from the third reading file back to the top of the second reading file. And as explained by our Speaker Pangolin in, our oversight over lands, is that there's discovery that this rezoning measure is not one contiguous lot, but it's two lots. And so, what he did is he had to divide the bill into two, because the, the law and our rules require that it's one bill per rez, one rezoning measure per, per land. And so, what he did is he, using the same committee report, he separated that out, and he filed the bill today that's Bill 217. So, I need to first bring the Bill 150 from the third reading file down to the second reading file.
On that motion, then, to, to bring 150 back up to the second reading file, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I move that we place Bill 217 in the, in the second reading file.
And also to add then 217 to the second reading, without any objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, I move that we go back to the, that's all, right, for now?
Yeah, well, just, we're back in the second reading.
Yeah, then I move that we go back to the second reading file.
Okay, without any objections, so ordered, and we'll recess.
And Madam Speaker, I move that we recess till two o'clock today.
Thank you, Senator. So, we are recessing until two this afternoon.